Okay, item number eight, 261 Flatbush Avenue. It's a special permit/ site plan to install a wireless service facility/ communication tower. Section block and lot is 48.74-4-31. Secret determination zone double R. Ward seven, cell phone part check, doing business as Verizon Wireless. Is the applicant John and Terza Shidi for the owners? Is there anybody besides the owner or applicant wishing to speak up? Item number eight. Mr. Riley, Officer Riley, you want to come on?
Yeah, I'm thinking.
Yeah, you're next, you'll be next, okay. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Heather, ready?
Good.
This thing's not working.
No, we could use some new ones.
All right. My name's Patrick Riley, work in Alderman, Ward seven. And this tower is going to be in my ward, and I'm concerned about a few things. One is, you know, maybe these men can speak to that, the extra radiation being given off by the towers in my neighborhood. We already have towers on top of the water tower, we already have cell towers up on top of the water tower, and I'm just a little concerned about that. Maybe they can ease my concerns on radiation. The, or any kind of energy being emitted, electromagnetic energy, whatever may be emitted from this tower, I'd like to truly hear about that. And the other thing is, I'm also concerned about how far this tower is going to stick above our tree line in the city of Kingston. We do have people across the way on Hurley Mountain that have beautiful views of our city. Of course, the steeples and the churches are sticking up, it's very picturesque. And I'd hate to see this tower make it less picturesque than it is. I'm hoping that they're taking every precaution to make sure there's not scar on our landscape up on the hill there, you know? So I hope that all these considerations have been looked upon, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Alderman.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Barbara Stemke, I'm-
Where's that microphone? Was it up? Yeah, bring it right up.
Okay, I'm Barbara Stemke, I'm in Ward nine. I've been following the issues around Wi-Fi, cell towers, smart meters for years. I have eighteen smart meters on my home, on my apartment building. So I know all about the health hazards. So that's what brings me here tonight. It's more than seen it, seen it, seen it is something, but health hazards are serious. Health hazards affect fetuses, infants, children, the sick, the elderly, and all the rest of us. And I would like to know from the Verizon people, where do you see the need for a new cell tower in Kingston? We have thirty-nine cell towers right now. We, Kingston is only eight point seven eight square miles. Seven point four nine of the miles are land, and one point two nine miles, square miles, are water. I have, I have had a Verizon cell phone for many, many years, and I have a consumer cell too, and I have never had a problem getting a signal in Kingston. And I live in the midtown Kingston area. I'm driving Flatbush Avenue, Nine W, East Chester Street bypass, Foxhole Avenue, and all the streets around, all the time. And I've never had a problem getting a signal. So I asked Verizon, where did you justify the need for a new cell tower? And I read your statements, your hundred seventeen page document with exhibit five, and I do not see the need in all those words that you use. They seem pretty frivolous, to be quite honest. I've never had a problem getting a cell signal. The population of, what is the population? Twenty-three thousand, I think, is the population of Kingston. We're not New York City, we don't need another cell tower here. So I asked the planning board to clearly search out, flesh out, what the need is, the so-called need. I doubt there is a need. And Susan Kaye Hall received an email from me where I outlined the range of my concerns, and I hope that she shares that with people. And also Kyla DeDee put a copy of, a paper copy of my concerns in the mailbox of each member of the planning board. I hope you can look at my concerns. And the basic concern is electromagnetic radiation. It makes people sick, it causes cancer, it causes tumors, it causes strokes. And the least among us, the youngest and most fragile, are most affected, but we are all affected. And the firefighters in California refuse to have cell towers near their firehouse because they want to be alert and at their best when they fight fires. There's, there is, there is evidence from across the country of why another cell tower is, is not a good thing, especially when it's not needed. I think that Verizon is a business, and their motive is just keep on putting cell towers wherever you can because it's all about business. Well, I'm all about health and wellness, and I want the planning board to be looking out for the health and wellness. And I must say that when I read the SEQA in the one hundred seventeen page document from Verizon, the question was, is there any impact on human beings? And the answer was no. Is there any impact on endangered or threatened species? The answer was yes. There's a northern long-eared bat that lives on the grounds where the cell tower would be located. Well, I think you should look into the facts concerning cell, cell tower radiation and how it makes people sick. And there, and also, in the, in the exhibit five, Verizon cites that the FCC regulation for Telecommunication Act of nineteen sixty-six, oh quote, says that there's no, no, no health risk at all, one tenth of a percent, some kind of a low number like that. But, but the only thing is, this is flawed, flawed non-science. It has, the FCC Telecommunication Act of nineteen ninety-six is based on a two-hundred-pound man with a prone suck in his head for five minutes. And that's what makes, makes the FCC decide that wireless communication is safe. Now, that's not what's on the ground, that's not with real people, children, infants, fetuses, the sick, elderly, and frail. And it's not with twenty-four-seven bathing in Wi-Fi that we're all exposed to. So we don't even know the, know the cell tower. That's, that's my plea to the planning board. Please do not approve this. And please have Verizon add human beings to their, to their, who's going to be affected on their SEQA, because they checked off no. And I would like Verizon to provide a distance, a number, of how far the proposed cell tower would be to the nearest apartment at Colonial Gardens, which is across the street from the proposed cell tower. We have Wilkwick Gardens, Colonial Gardens, and another one, another Kingston City Housing Authority directly across the street. And we also have a whole neighborhood, Lincoln Park, right in back of the, of the proposed cell tower. And that runs, that neighborhood runs from East Chester Street bypass to Foxhole Avenue. It's a dense neighborhood of mostly single-family homes. And, and they're all going to be exposed. Rouse's apiary, there's a bee, there's a beekeeper, right, a stone's throw from the proposed cell tower. Bees don't do well with cell towers, and they, in their Verizon's document, it was stated that Rouse, Rouse was invited to have the tower on their property, but they declined. So there are so many reasons, I could go on and on. And I'll be happy to provide to you the peer-reviewed scientists from around the world who dispute and refute and prove that the FCC Telecommunication Act of nineteen sixty-six, nineteen ninety-six has false science. And that is what Verizon is laying its claim that this is safe, on that nineteen sixty-six telecommunications act that the FCC promotes. But all over the United States, there are people like me and others going to planning boards in cities saying the same thing that I'm saying, and planning boards are hearing the same message. This is not a isolated situation. Please do not approve, and do not approve it tonight, and do not approve it at all. We need more time to get the facts about these health effects. And I have the latest scientific documents, if you want them, I will happily give them to you. Peer-reviewed scientists from around the world. Okay. And this, lastly, because we have a lot in three low-income housing projects directly across the street from the, the proposed cell tower, this could be an example of environmental racism. We have all kinds of people of color living there, including children, women, and all kinds of races. And this is not fair to them to locate an unneeded, that's the main thing, this is not needed. I would like Verizon to prove why you need the cell tower here. Because, because emergency calls, all the little, the list of all the little tiny important, important functions of a cell phone, that doesn't add up to a need. You talk about ambulances and all these emergency things, but it, it doesn't justify a new cell tower. We have thirty-nine cell towers in Kingston right now. Thank you.
Hello, Jack Shieke, 261 Flatbush Avenue, a lot of races. I don't own a cell phone. My wife and daughter do. They can reach us from there. The, I'm sorry, I'm still getting part of what you said, which was kind of weird. Anyway, yeah, the tower behind my house, when we first moved up here in two thousand, we said, yeah, this is huge water tower, this control, tons of, you know, like, you know, everything they say that says, well, you can't have that, it's going to come upon you, and it's not the coin, not the cave. But at the end of the day, it's, for people who have cell phones, and, and it's really going to be taking exchange out and forward to that, but for us, for me, it's not even a no there, but I think, I think it's kind of important for the people who can connect back and forth to it. But it's not a racist thing, it's not an electrical thing, it's not any of that. So anyways, thank you for hearing me, and I'll let you get back to, thank you.
Town of Alderman, one hundred and twenty-first Street. What Barbara Stemke meant was environmental justice-
Wait, you got a call out there?
What Barbara Stemke meant was it's an environmental justice issue, because there's a very large population of people who make under a certain amount of money. And so the connection is, it's just that, that people of color are still marginalized to the, the point where they are disproportionately in that kind of housing. But this is a health issue for widely recognized, it's widely recognized health issue for a significant percentage of the population. Before cell towers started increasing, it was estimated three percent by the United States Access Board. And I know that at this point, it's being considered as a, what is it, the seeker is an un-something, not type one, not type two, but the other one. And I would hope that because this is something that could potentially be a big, big deal, that, that the planning board and the planning office would take their time with it and, and start off slow, so that the public has a chance to, to provide input and to learn about the, the issue. Thanks very much.
It's one of my folks to know that we're not going to be making a decision at this point, this stuff should be circulated to other agencies for, for, to take the public hearing with this, which I just want my folks to know that, so.
I'm sorry, can I just clarify? And I meant including the secret of view and all parts of secret.
Anybody else? Okay. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you.
If you need another record, I'm going to pull that one, it's on the code, we're having difficulties, we apologize for that.
No problem.
Can you state your names for the record, please?
Sure, I'm Scott Wilson, I'm an attorney with Young Summer in Albany, New York, and I represent Verizon Wireless.
I'm Mike Crosby with Verizon Wireless, radio frequency engineer.
So we've got quite a bit to leave to review, you know, and this, folks have a lot of questions, I know the senators, I know the planning board members will have some questions and concerns about this. Do you want to start by just delving into the need, why you chose this site, and we'll go from there?
Sure, sure. I, I'll save the boring speech about how we get to this point, but the bottom line is, we do have a need for a new facility in this area. As Ms. Stemke referenced before, exhibit five, which was prepared by Mike Crosby, demonstrates what our existing network is, what the issues are, basically it's capacity and coverage issues. So I'll put that aside for now, for any questions, we can certainly come back to it. But recognizing a need for a new site in this area, we first approached the owners of the water tower, which was like a hundred and three feet tall, if you ever take, perfect. It's, it's considered co-location in the industry, which is something that is generally favored. Put antennas and equipment on existing tall structures, we do it all the time, that was our preference. We met with the water folks onsite visit at least once. There were some neighbors that were upset with locating another facility there, it's fairly constrained physically, so there's not a lot of room there, and the water department had some issues with their, how they were going to maintain their site if they were to add another carrier. I believe T-Boll is out there now in Sprint. So basically, back in October of two thousand sixteen, they said, you know, thank you, but no thank you, we can't entertain leasing the property to you. So we basically started again, say, well, we still need a site in this area, we have to go out and identify a site. We looked at a total of nine other properties, you know, the housing authority site, we looked at apartments, but those are two-story buildings, three-story buildings. We need ninety feet or so for the antennas in order to make the site work. If we put it at thirty-five feet, we're not going to build, it's not going to do anybody any good. So we looked at a bunch of different properties, and some people just said outright, no, we don't, we don't, we don't want you to come here. I think that the people that have the bees said, no, we're not going to lease any property to you, we can't force them to lease property to us. Another large property, and it was, what was it? It was a really large property kind of north of the property, maybe, it, you know, would be great for a cell tower, but they weren't interested. Again, we have that documented, that's documented in exhibit six of our application. So we ended up at the current property, we negotiated a lease with the property owners, and here we are.
Is this going to replace other towers that you have currently in the area?
No.
It's going to be-
Sorry.
-added?
No, it's, it's, we need it, because if you look at the information that Mike provided in exhibit five-
Just to clarify.
For clarification purposes, no, we, we're capacity exhausted in this area. That doesn't mean that people can't, someone who's trying to use their Verizon phone will drop the call automatically, but generally, the network is over capacity. The data shows that, you know, most people have cell phones, most, some people have multiple cell phones, a lot of people use wireless network for other devices, iPads and everything. It's just the growth is exponential. We're in communities all over the country doing this, it's, you know, it's, it's just driving us to need more and more sites.
Just to get the alternative sites off, off the table, did you contact Town of Ulster all with their water tower, or, which is just up the street?
How far away is it? I don't think we did it. So we're in the Town of Ulster right now, about a mile away.
That's the one that's in the super prime location?
This is the one near Speedway gas station, it's actually a pass in the-
How much?
Highway corner.
Quarter. What are the, I don't know if the elevation is out there, but is it really?
Water tower, we're also-
Yeah, we have some, we already have some small cells in that area, like the Stewart's, we're on the Stewart's, and there's actually, I think there's a Verizon store that's just north, we're on that for a small cell.
Actually, speaking of Stewart's, I was in the board a couple years ago, I just don't remember, were you, was it Verizon that came through adding in the city of Kingston on the Boulevard, and adding on Broadway, and adding on Foxhole Avenue cell?
Foxhole Avenue, yes.
And at the time, that was supposed to alleviate the capacity of the tower that was out in town, outside of the-
Sockville, Sockville, yeah, we had Sockville Road. So right now, we only have one macro facility in Kingston. And, you know, I heard the reference to the number of cell towers out there, but we're only on, we're only in one location. We have, we have other small cells. Our initial attempts to, our initial attempts to resolve capacity issue was done with the least invasive way possible, which were the small cells. They're not offloading the necessary traffic, and that's why at this point, this is the solution that's deemed necessary. And as Scott mentioned, we were very interested in co-locating on an existing structure that is obviously our intent is to not come in and build a new structure, we obviously prefer to locate on something that's existing. We naturally were attracted to the water tank that had other wireless carriers on it, and in the process of trying to look that out, they became uninterested, and we searched for other properties to achieve the same thing. As far as height goes, the comment earlier about, we're minimizing the height, we're basically just getting to where we can clear the trees, so it's a minimal amount of the structure that actually extends above the trees in the area, just enough of the system to work, because obviously if the antennas are in the clutter, that degrades the signal unnecessarily, and we don't achieve the goals, and we wouldn't be back here for more sites, which we prefer to not have to do.
How far above the tree line do you think this is thing going to?
Most of these trees are around eighty feet tall, some are a little bit more, you know, so we're just, we're getting above that. And it's not just the trees that are immediately adjacent, but it's the trees that make up the morphology of the area. So you have a little bit of rolling hills, especially a little bit to the southeast, so there's some areas where even though we may be ten feet above the trees in one spot, we actually might be right in the trees in another angle. So we try to even that out as much as possible, to minimize the impact.
But right now, the top of the tower is ninety-five feet tall, as proposed. Then there's a, a small, narrow lightning rod, four or five feet, but again, a few inches wide.
Do you have any type of facility locally that's similar to this?
Some of, well, this one's only ninety feet, so, I mean, most of the towers that you guys are used to seeing that we have along the thruway on the places, those are a hundred and fifty, a hundred and eighty feet tall, so this is substantially less significant than what you're used to as far as a normal cell tower. It's definitely a smaller macro.
You know, I've done a bunch of work in this area for the last fifteen years, and I'll try to, off the top of my head, I can think of one, but I'll try to get some information for you, huh? Sure.
Yeah, anything I can think of right now is, is definitely bigger, I just-
Even if it's not in this particular area, but if you have like-
Oh, sure.
-models, some of those, that we can kind of-
Sure.
-like see, like, what's it look like on the ground, how big the pole is, and what-
Yeah. Got it.
The visual.
Yes.
You folks are probably doing balloon tests, right, for, for visual?
So right now, we didn't do a balloon test, but the last exhibit we did, we, we started with just a computerized, before you do a balloon test, computerized model that is intended to depict how far the, the facility would be visible from in what locations, and that's in exhibit eleven of your application. I don't know if anybody can see this here, but there's a green color that's kind of in the center, then off a little bit. That's what would be visible from that two-mile radius. There's other colors in here, there's the yellow and the other red. Red is basically blocked by topography, and most of it's blocked by vegetation. So, you know, it wasn't required in your zoning code, so we just put this in first.
I think a balloon test would be something, I mean, I would, I think I would prefer having that visual, but I understand what you're going with, with this representation here, we did it with the G M, we did that with the G M, so I, is that something-
How does it compare to the current water tower?
The water tower? So the water tower is, they're pretty close together. I don't know these, I don't know, the elevations, I'm pretty sure, are pretty close, but I-
So we're a little lower.
But we're definitely a little lower, because the water tower, on the plans that I saw, were a hundred and three feet, a hundred and five feet.
Five or a little bit, true.
Are we? So the water tower's actually more imposing, actually significantly more imposing because of how the girth of that, that I was just there today, and that's going to be taller.
Sixty-six, sixty-six. That's a pretty big one. Part of it. Pretty big hole in right there, actually.
That's a good point.
Yeah, but I, for me, I think for, for, so I can get that understanding, I think a balloon test would-
I mean, how, how wide is it?
Around eighty.
Oh, you mean the tower? So a tower of that height, you're going to have, usually at the base, going to be three to four feet, maybe three. It'll taper a little bit, so that's what, maybe two feet at the top, you know, that's generally how it goes.
Which is like a metal steel tower?
It's going to be galvanized steel, so it, you know, tends to weather, kind of a gray color.
Now, is there anything camouflage on these, like, some of them look like trees within them?
You, you can, that's done, it's been done. On a site like this, the problem with that is that, you know, in order to do that, you're going to have to raise this tower a lot higher to, to make it try to be tree-like, so it's probably going to defeat the purpose of it, you know, because you want to put the little cone shape on top, and then you're going to see this big structure sticking up among native trees, and it's going to be like, that's not really a tree, but.
How about noise?
Sure, noise. Pretty, very silent. There is a backup generator-
Ground-mounted equipment.
Ground-mounted equipment, it runs through your standard, you know, two-hundred-amp service. If the service is to go out, there's an emergency backup generator that's, that is used during the power outages, and what is it, a thirty, I don't know, they've changed it, but I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know what thirty is.
Maybe sixty K or generator, so. Generally, we've done, you know, we've got the specs, and usually, it's like a lawnmower, maybe every, at twenty-one feet or so away, but I can get specs on that, so you don't-
Lighting on the tower?
No lighting on the tower.
No lighting on the tower.
There will be ground-mounted, like a motion detect light, so if our people have to come into the compound at night to fix something, it'll go on, but it's going to be directed down, it's not going to be blaring out to the properties. Plus, you still should have surrounding vegetation, because that area right now is, is very wooded.
And maintenance scheduling, how frequent might that be?
Three times a year. It's very little now.
Unless it's some-
Yes, unless it's a problem, then actually physically, you have hardware problem that has to go out, be replaced, fixed, or whatever. Most problems are taken care of remotely now. I, can I, maybe I can address some of the comments, unless you have another question? And this goes, I think, to the alderman's question about radiation. I turn up to use radiation, but I, and it's, basically, it's a radio signal- I turn off the radio, but I, and it's basically, it's a radio signal, because it's not ionizing radiation in any way. As opposed to your microwave oven that you have in your house. That's ionizing radiation, that can change your DNA structure. This cannot. It's a radio signal, low power. Having said that, the FCC has regulations on this, and anything above ten meters is basically, has been determined safe for all purpose, all purposes of public exposure. So any antennas, antennas at this height, ninety feet, FCC says they're perfectly safe. You don't have to provide any precautions to limit the radiation, the, yeah, the signals at all. There's also, there is a telecommunications...
Could you just speak a little louder?
I'm sorry. And there's also the Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six that does say, if we demonstrate we are in full compliance with the FCC regulations, which we do, I have a report from a licensed New York State engineer in here, that says we are in full compliance. We're like one percent of the maximum exposure. That telecommunications law says that a local municipality can't deny the application for that reason. There's, you know, there's no scientific evidence that these are not safe. Reliable scientific evidence, that's, you know, there's this, there's stuff, you'll find it in Australia, they have all these reports on the internet. That's one of the reasons that can be bad, because anyone can say anything. But the FCC has established the law, they established what we have to comply with, and we do comply with it.
And you'll have, you do have documentation that will accompany this?
It's in here right now, it's Exhibit Seven. It's our FCC, RF Safety FCC Compliance Proposal. It's by Linam Engineering, a New York State licensed engineer. And he explains that we are so far below what we are legally entitled to emit. Like we're one percent.
Less than one percent.
Less than one percent. I've been doing this for twenty years, I'm not an engineer, but I've seen all these reports. Even when you get all the carriers on one tower, at a, you know, at a height of a hundred feet or so, even combined, you're at one percent, maybe two percent. So it's, there's such a factor of, it's so diluted, that we could actually emit a lot more power if we wanted to.
Ma'am, we asked that we respect the speakers, we gave you the opportunity to speak, okay?
Telling lies.
Well, that's... You had your chance, okay? We're just asking to respect the speakers.
I'll get that to you guys, okay? So the other question that I think the alderman had also was above the tree line. So the tower right now would be about fifteen feet, give or take, above the existing tree line. If we're going to do a...
Two-foot wide post?
Yeah, but then we're in the, but then at the top, you would have, you would have an antenna array. So you're two-foot wide post, and then you're going to have three mounts, antenna mounts, going in different directions. And the antennas would be attached to that. But we can show it if we're going to do the balloon test.
Yeah.
Is that possible to mount, because we have that?
Well, we do, we generally do three mounts, so we can get three sixty-degree coverage. So it's a three mount, three-sector array is basically what.
Are those those white handles you see from...
The up in the air? Yeah, exactly.
Would there be room for more space? Would there be more room for more? And is it, are you able to attach it to that tower?
Yeah, I mean, I think the only issue is, well, structurally, and whether or not, you know, another carrier would come down a little lower. But you have T-Mobile and Sprint over on the water tower. And again, I don't know if they would move over. We're not, you know, we're not advertising it that as, "Hey, come over here." You know, we don't care whether they come over or not, frankly. Don't wish to be flippant about it, it doesn't matter to us. But there could be room if they wanted to do that.
Additional, additional members would trigger them to come back or...
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
But that's a possibility. That's, that's...
It's a possibility. I mean, and we generally design our towers structurally so that you could accommodate additional equipment, because generally, you build, you like to build one tower, not have multiple towers in the community. So we will always build it with enough support to take care of that, so...
Thanks for support for a balloon test here, I would like one, so... Okay, you can arrange that through, through your office, through the office, and do that way.
Yeah, I think if we can just send out some emails on what this pole or tower would look like, both on the top, the D-Ride?
Yeah.
And, you know, what it would look like on the ground, just so when we're looking at the balloon, you kind of know what...
But, I'm sorry, Robert. What we're going to, I only, what we're going to do, if we do the balloon, that's what we're going to do, the balloon test. The product of the balloon test will be, we will actually provide a simulated photo from the different locations, so you will see what the tower will look like, if it's visible from a specific location. I don't know if that addresses, because a lot of the towers are going to be frankly screened from the trees.
So our office will work with you to determine what locations to take the visuals from. But if any of the board members have any input or thoughts as to where they would like to see them taken from, let us know.
Yeah, we'd prefer, I mean, it costs money to do this, so if we could do it once, that's preferable, instead of saying, "Oh, we should have this location," because then we're going to get people mobilized.
Will you let us know when?
Yes.
Do it from my office in the office, county office building, I've got a clear view of both water towers, actually.
Okay.
Right there.
And although it's not going to be a part of the approval process, but are you inclined to reach out to the Town of Ulster, like Robert said, and see about their second water tower, if that's something?
Well, I will definitely address it, but I mean, you know, we're talking about the search range. The search range is pretty small.
Yeah, the search range area was fairly limited in scope. So this, this would be outside of that area, and it's generally in an area that we've already addressed with other solutions. So we'll certainly take a look at it to make sure that we've reviewed the request.
It's about a third of a mile away.
About a third of a mile northwest.
Does it have traffic like that?
I think I know where, I think I know where. We'll definitely...
Yes, we'll provide a response for that.
It overlooks the same value that you're, I think it reaches your...
And I see you're looking to secure the barbed wire fence, is that part of the proposal?
I believe that's part of the plans, correct.
And that's going to trigger...
That, the clarity is something that...
Barbed wire.
Thanks.
Maybe we'll revise our plans then. I don't have authority to do it, but I'll make them do it, just to, we can... That's a, that's a typical build, to keep people out, but I'll ask about this, because I like to limit the...
Boards.
I mean, because, because this is not a really accessible location? Would you really feel that there's a need for that?
You know what? I can, I can, I'm pretty sure I can work with them, and they'll agree with me.
Okay. And this parcel is not going to be subdivided off of the current residential parcel, correct?
That wasn't the intent.
Okay. So the property owner, I just want to ask, are you aware that it's going to change your assessment from residential to a...
Yeah, absolutely.
You're aware of that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. I just want to make sure you're clear.
Yeah, I was on it for about a year plus, whatever we'd be talking, and they said, everything like, how high, everything's going to be. And yeah, everything that, my wife and I and my daughter, we concur that everything, I think everything is, is good.
Okay. As long as you're aware.
Yes, thank you so much, Ellen.
Yep.
So, um, just to be clear, part of this balloon test will get an idea, the aerial pole, some type of, the bottom, like what it looks like if you have another installation, even if it's in western New York, something that's similar to this?
What is, um, yeah, you're not going to, I'll get you what the installation would look like, but I can't imagine you're going to actually see the base of this. So I'll do that separately, just in case you can't see the base.
I mean, if you stand in this driveway and look up, are we going, are you going to see this base, where this site plan is?
I don't believe so.
No. No, you wouldn't. And then the part around Flatbush is all, you know, the curve that goes around, it's all tree. So that, those trees, we still have some of those trees there to help protect it, protect the view.
Another suggestion could be that the board could take a site visit and walk up there. Give permission from the property owner to go up and just look at the location. If that's of interest to anybody.
I would take that out there. If you feel the need there is on the board.
My only concern is this isn't a residential area, and we're kind of pushing the envelope here with commercial residential, so I'm a little skeptical, so that's...
Okay.
But I'm just, how, how...
Can you speak louder?
My, my only concern was this is in the residential area, so I'm just a little, where this is with the other residences, I'm just trying to gauge all of that.
And that's completely understandable. The zoning law does allow, though, for these, but I understand.
Where are you coming from? Do we have any other questions right now?
Not right now.
All right, so we're going to arrange for a visual task, right, with the balloons. We're going to, we're not going to be considering those, circulated to the other agencies, and that's going to take place. And we are going to keep the public hearing, correct, for the planning committee. So this time, the motion that we table, item number B. Your second. Senator Premier Joe Scherner, all in favor? The votes, Gary?
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much.